7:00 PM, Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue. Would everyone stand please? This meeting is being recorded, video and audio, and we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and our republic for which we stand as one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on the minutes that we... I'm asking to be approved, there is one change. You have the minutes?
Was that these right here?
I penciled one word out acting.
Oh, yeah.
If there's anything else, let it be known. Are there any other problems? Are we all set with the minutes?
The only other thing I wanted added was an agent report at the end.
I'm sorry?
The agent report at the end. There isn't one, and I think there should be something.
Okay, agent report. Okay. Okay. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of June 22nd, 2023?
Motion to accept the minutes from 6:22:23.
Second? Is there a second?
Would that be a motion to accept pending those revisions?
Yes, includes those revisions.
Okay.
Okay, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. We have a presentation by the Mass Fish and Wildlife Program on the new biomap that now includes local components, which are specifically designed to support municipal decisions and actions and make the biomap relevant to many new communities.
Thank you, Lauren.
Okay.
All right.
Could you identify yourselves, please, and...
Sure. My name's Sarah Wasserman.
I'm Alec Kazand.
Okay. And you're on.
Great, thank you so much. Hi, everyone. We really appreciate your time and having us come down tonight. We are both biomap outreach specialists with Mass Wildlife, so our job is to spread awareness of the new biomap and provide technical support to anyone and everyone. But we're here today to present some information on biomap and how it's applicable here in Dayton, so we'll get started. In Massachusetts, we have nearly 3 million acres of forest, 1,500 miles of coastline, a vast network of rivers, critical wetlands, all of these which provide a wide variety of habitat for plants and animals. These systems offer vital ecological benefits like filtering our air, cleaning our water, mitigating the detrimental effects of climate change and providing us with food as well as economic and recreation opportunities. The people of the Commonwealth have spent decades protecting these incredible natural resources to help ensure that all life, plants, animals and people can thrive. However, despite significant progress and conservation successes, our biodiversity is in crisis at the global, national and state scale. In Massachusetts, we currently have 432 species on our endangered species list, and threats to biodiversity include such things as habitat loss and fragmentation, invasive species and emerging diseases, and all of these are being compounded by climate change. If we want to reverse these trends, urgent action is needed, and that is what brings us here today to introduce you all to biomap. With this product, biomap will now be a living dynamic map, which, as you'll see in the next slide, the previous version was called biomap 2, but this one is not biomap 3, just biomap, to reflect that it will be more dynamic going forward. But speaking of that history, Massachusetts has a long history of being a leader with the development of groundbreaking conservation tools. The first biomap was created in 2001, followed by Living Waters in 2003 and biomap 2 in 2010, and then this new version of biomap, which was released in November of 2022. And over the years, these products have provided a framework for the protection and stewardship of lands and waters critical for biodiversity conservation. It's important to note that while Alec and I are with Mass Wildlife, biomap is the result of an ongoing collaboration between Mass Wildlife and the Massachusetts Chapter of the Nature Conservancy. With similar missions, goals and science-based approaches to conservation, Mass Wildlife and TNC are natural partners to produce and maintain biomap. We like to think of biomap as being more than just a map, but a map as well as a tool and a vision for the people of the Commonwealth to come together to strategically protect, manage and restore lands and waters that are most important for conserving biodiversity in Massachusetts now and into the future. Biomap, this new version follows the structure that was with biomap 2, if you're familiar. Those are core habitat and critical natural landscapes being the two elements that organize all of the different components that go into biomap. Core habitat identifies areas that are critical for the long-term persistence of rare species and a wide diversity of resilient ecosystems, while critical natural landscape identifies large landscapes and habitat buffers that enhance resilience, maintain connectivity and support ecological processes. Together, these make up 2.4 million acres in the state and 44% of which is currently considered permanently protected open space. And about 90% of what was in the previous version is included in this new version, so there's been some shift, both areas being lost due to development, but also areas being added due to the development of new methodologies which have added data to the map. And when we look at all of those components that make up core habitat and critical natural landscape, you can see there's a wide variety from rare species core to aquatic core and wetland core, and then landscape blocks, aquatic core buffers, and then coastal adaptation areas, just to name a few. And when we look at it on the map, as we're looking at it here, the dark green is the core habitat and the light green is the critical natural landscape. But you also have the ability on our online mapper to kind of peel away those top layers and look at them in components view. So now it's broken them down into all those components we saw on the slide before. And I'm going to turn it over to Alec to talk about the new local and regional components, which you mentioned in the introduction, which we hope will make biomap more relevant to municipalities.
Thanks, Sarah. So one of these key innovations in the new biomap is this addition of the local components or locally important habitats. We've really heard feedback over the years from all types of users that biomap can really be accessible for some communities, but different throughout the state. You know, our municipalities have very different patterns of development and natural lands, and so the amount of statewide habitat in that core and critical natural landscape really varies across the state. So we wanted to introduce a local version of that to help complement that statewide data and focus on some municipal-level decision-making. So we have an example here to show you what that looks like. So here we're looking at the landscape blocks, which are part of the critical natural landscapes. And you can see, this is from that statewide perspective, and you can see that there's some areas that are, you know, more abundant with those landscape blocks and some with less. These are identifying areas of intact mosaics of forests, wetland and aquatic core areas, really the largest of those regions. But we can see there's some towns that don't have any and really kind of more towards the western area where a lot of those large intact forests are. But if we add in a local perspective... Maybe? Oh, there we are. If we add in that local version, we can see now it's complementing that statewide view, and this is adding to that map. We can already see a lot of communities having more data, and it's using same ecological integrity data and the same methodologies that went into that statewide version, but thresholds are smaller and it's looking at each municipality from the perspective of just one town at a time. So it really will make this more applicable and helpful for communities to make decisions at these different scales. And we also want to note that it doesn't replace that statewide data, it's meant to add to and complement it. So they're meant to be used together, and we can show what that looks like when we take a look at your town. And we're happy to answer more about the local components and how that's kind of built into it. I went too far. On the other end of the scale, we also wanted to identify habitats that are a significant contribution for conservation at scales larger than Massachusetts. As we know, you know, plants and animals don't consider these boundaries, and we're seeing this range shift for, you know, tree species like the tulip tree pictured here moving north and westward through our state. And so we wanted to identify areas that... So we have the regional connectivity layer that identifies places that support these large-scale range shifts for species. And then we also wanted to identify habitat for rare species that are highly vulnerable at the regional, national and global scales. So we have the local, the statewide and the regional scales to give some different perspectives in the decision-making. Then we're going to... We've also added in the climate resiliency aspect to this, so built from the Nature Conservancy's climate resiliency data, which we can see some of it here, is, you know, identifying areas to help plants and animals and people cope with the impacts of climate change and again move through that range shifts and as habitats are moving more northward. So these are built into three components, wetland, forest and landscape blocks, as well as some aquatic fisheries teams identifying cold water climate refugia in rivers to identify some areas to support that habitat. So that's all the data and kind of innovations that we've had. Let's put it together and take a look at it on a map in your community and see what that looks like. So I know it's a little small up on here, but looking at the map, and you can go and check it out yourself online, about 23% of that is core habitat in that darker green and 40% is critical natural landscape in the light green. There is some overlap between them as they're meant to support each other, but the... This is that elements view as we see it, but if we want to peel it back and look at the individual components, we can see some different interesting things going on in the town. So just to look at a few, we have the aquatic core, of course, Ton River along that eastern border. Rare species core is going to be in that pink. There are a few sections around the town. Several vernal pool cores in the red, as well as wetland core in that green and supporting buffers in the lighter green around it. A section of priority natural community down here, which is a alluvial red maple swamp, and then several landscape blocks in that lighter tan. So just breaking down that statewide data, again, this is looking at those really, you know, that statewide perspective, but if we wanted to add in the local components, we can go back to that elements view, so kind of putting those groups of the statewide together and then adding in that local data. So we can see local aquatic habitat added into there. We have local rare species, again, in that pink, as well as local wetlands in the green and then local landscapes added into, among some others. So we can see really adding in... This is adding in another 22% of the town at that local scale. So really quite a lot is a great example of how it's adding to and identifying some of the statewide perspective and some new areas in the town to really give it another perspective for your decision-making at this municipal level. And then we also, in our mapper and online, you can add in the protected open space layer. So this is a great way to identify the progress of conservation in your area. And so we can see kind of... We've also identified the properties that the town owns or manages or is a part of in that red there. So we can see a few examples. Naughty Pine Estates Conservation Area has vernal pool core, rare species core, wetland and local landscapes. And we have Maple Street Recreation Area, again with vernal pool and landscape blocks, and then areas of municipal water supply and that's supporting the landscapes and wetland and aquatic core areas. So a lot of information. I know that was very quick and kind of hard to see from up here, but certainly can explore the information on our website and dive deeper into that, and we're happy to answer more questions about it. I'm going to turn it back over to Sarah to quickly talk about a little differences between this and some other data you might be used to.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, so I just want to take a moment to highlight the difference between biomap and another map you may be familiar with, known as priority habitat. Priority habitat is codified under the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act. It's a regulatory screening tool that allows the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program to review projects or activities to impacts to state-listed species, excuse me. But this is different than biomap, which is non-regulatory. It's fundamentally a tool to plan and prioritize conservation actions. And we definitely encourage you to take a look at the website later on. But through the interactive map on the website, you know, you can customize the data display to meet your interests and your needs. You can filter through those components that we were showing earlier and to see the data that's most relevant to, you know, what you're interested in. Also on the website is an opportunity to learn more. We, you know, are really valuing education and engagement in our outreach, and so there's a lot of information to dig into on the website. We have story maps, which are these great dynamic web pages with, you know, pictures, and it's a, you know, just a great way to walk through the information. And we also have a lot of fact sheets about all of those components, you know, if you need a refresher. But also on our Habitat Restoration Resource Center, which I'll mention in just a moment, just gives a lot of great information. You could really explore it for hours, so encourage you to do so. But we really see the real value of biomap in going from understanding all of this information to implementation on the ground. And biomap is designed to support a wide variety of conservation strategies. And of course, we know there's a wide variety of habitats in the state, and each of these needs specific combinations of conservation strategies. One of these strategies that we'll mention today is land protection. A fact we like to mention in our presentation is that over 200,000 acres of land was protected in Massachusetts between 2009 and 2022, and 62% of that protection occurred within the boundaries of biomap 2, core habitat and critical natural landscape. So it's our hope that going forward, biomap will continue to focus this conservation funding and effort. And while land protection is, of course, essential, it's often not enough. Over 40% of the rare and declining species in Massachusetts require active management of their habitats. And as I mentioned it before, we now have this Habitat Restoration Resource Center, which provides recommendations and resources for stewardship actions that promote resilience, restore ecological processes and prepare habitats to recover from and adapt to climate change. And that link down there at the bottom is a way to get directly to that website, but you can also access it from our main page. And Alec's going to finish us off tonight.
So lastly, we just wanted to mention, you know, how this kind of... We've seen this being utilized by different users across, you know, all different types of groups from, you know, land trusts, state agencies, municipalities, regional planning agencies and nonprofits, and how it's being utilized and how we're seeing that over the past years is really great, especially with this local data being incorporated. So one example that we've seen in your area, you know, the 2021 OSRP that Open Space Committee did does include the biomap 2 data in deciding kind of how that implement or, you know, how they can look at their actions there. And also from a funding perspective, this is built into a lot of grant funding from Division of Conservation Services to as a criterion for that application. So there's a lot of great ways to include that. MVP plans, master plans, regional planning agencies and their planning, as well as just infrastructure and grants and funding. So a lot of great ways to incorporate it. And we really hope that, you know, the vision of biomap in providing this resource for community to understand and engage with the natural communities and, you know, all these types of data sets really will hopefully provide this investment in strategic protection of the lands and waters that are really most important for conservation biodiversity in our state. Quickly, just want to mention, this is a big project by many different people and a great example of collaboration between different conservation partners. So thankful for all the funding and hard work that went into it. But this is the short link to go through it. It does work on cell phones, on website, on computer. It's interactive and the mapping also works on your phone, so you can utilize it in the field if you are someone that's going out there. But we'd be happy to take some questions if we have some time. We're welcome to follow up with us if anyone has any further questions.
I do, actually. Thank you very much. It's a great presentation, by the way. Do you know, is there anywhere that we can learn more about the potential uses for biomap in grant writing and fund acquisition and things like that?
Yes. So we didn't have the time to kind of go through the website, but there's a lot of resources in terms of, you know, links to funding, whether it's at mass.gov online. So whether that's for implementation of kind of biomap or if it's for that Habitat Restoration Resource Center. So there are some... There are additional fact sheets and links for these additional information. And then on mass.gov, the Mass Fisheries website has quite a host of resources as well. But if you have specific questions or want to get in touch, we certainly can help provide you with some more information.
Thank you very much.
I have no questions.
All right.
I think we're all set.
That might be a question from the public.
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Are there no regulatory functions to biomap?
Yeah, biomap is not designed as a regulatory tool. It incorporates, you know, like the Massachusetts Endangered Species List, but then it goes beyond that, has a wider breadth. It's just designed to be at a larger scale. You know, fundamentally not regulatory.
I have a regulatory tool for it.
What's that?
So let's say you have an impact to a resource area. Somebody's going to come in and disturb 10 square feet of E W, which is no minimum threshold for requiring wildlife habitat evaluation. You look up on that and you say, oh, it's in...
Sure.
Forehappened.
Whatever. And it'll help the Conservation Commission decide whether or not Appendix A or Appendix B wildlife habitat evaluation is required. And then when you're reviewing the wildlife habitat evaluation, you review it a little more critically because it's in one of those areas.
Sure. I mean, the way that towns incorporate biomap into bylaws or any other processes is, you know, really to them, the tool is not defined for them.
You don't necessarily even have to include it.
Yeah.
It is in consideration, like in an open space plan, whether, you know, looking at each parcel and their conservation purposes.
Yeah, but just from a... When somebody's building a house in this sensitive area in your... In a resource area. And Concom decides that... Or it's applicable that you do wildlife habitat evaluation. This is a tool that helps you figure out the sensitivity of the area and how much you should be critiquing the analysis and what they're doing.
Yeah, understandably.
Yeah.
How old are the lines that they use? They use satellite maps to look at vegetation?
Yeah, so satellite aerial imagery was part of it. There's a lot that goes into it. There's several models. UMass makes a model called the Index of Ecological Integrity. That was incorporated, the Nature Conservancy. And actually, a lot of the polygons, once those initial analyses were run, they were went... They went in and, you know, kind of hand delineated some of those specific borders and others. You know, the buffers take into account, that sort of thing. In terms of the highly technical... Because each component had a different process and how it was created. We are in the process of working on a technical document that really gets into the fine print on that. But yeah, it was a combination of aerial imagery, models, and then data submitted to the Natural Heritage Program. We have an application called Heritage Hub where observations of state-listed species are processed by the science staff, and that was also part of the data that went into it.
Oh, and are the maps updated?
Yeah, good question. So as we said, we hope it's... It's going to be more dynamic. The last one was 10 years ago in the update, so sooner than that is the goal. Just one year out, we don't have a good timeline going, but the updates will come as large changes to that source data that Sarah just mentioned become really important and have to rerun it. Because it's such a whole statewide modeling, it has to be kind of a significant change in some of that data. So we're hoping every couple of years or as it's moving forward or as things kind of really drastically change. Absolutely.
I have one more question. Will the UMass CAPS maps incorporated to these?
Yes, that's the Index of Ecological Integrity. Part of that, the conservation, yeah, that program.
Okay. Are the CAPS, those regional maps of regional and statewide importance now, like, are they moot now? Or are they still being used? Or are they incorporated to biomap?
They are incorporated. The CAPS, IEI maps are incorporated. I wouldn't say that makes the program moot on its own. Biomap is, you know, its own extension. You know, it kind of blends a lot of different data sets and it serves that function. But CAPS is still, you know, valuable on its own, for sure.
Yeah, and there are also different data sets in CAPS as well, so it only uses a few of those within it. So there's a whole host of things that UMass does have through that CAPS program. And that's one of those other big changes. If that changes again soon, then biomap will change as well.
Is it going to change soon?
Not that we know of.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, thanks so much for your time, for having us, and yeah.
And if you have more questions, naturalheritage@mass.gov. You can reach out to us and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is to review, discuss an act for additional two hours per week for Conservation Act. And this would go through August... Through the end of August until our new secretary is found. Is there anyone that... Any discussion on this?
The only thing I would say is, anyone in the audience, if you know anybody looking for an 18-hour-a-week part-time position, be combined position with sewer and conservation. Great mother hours.
Okay. Is there a motion to request additional two hours for Lisa to do the secretary work until one is... Until a secretary is found?
I would like to propose a motion to recommend to the Board of Selectmen an additional two hours per week for the conservation agent until August 31st, 2023.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion from anyone? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passed. Okay, DI Trust Comprehensive Subdivision seeks to construct 135 single-family homes and 13,137 linear feet of associated roadway off of Forest Street. DI Trust has requested a continuance to August 17. Is there a motion to accept that continuance?
Motion to continue to 8/17/2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reed Brothers Farms Limited Liability Partnership Outback Engineering has requested a continuance to August 17.
Motion to continue until... Reed Brothers Farm Limited Liability Partnership, DEP file SE017-0447, until August 17th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, we have an ENRAD application by Dean Smith of New Leaf Dyton Energy Storage One LLC for Zero Maned Lane Map One Lot, lots 82 and 82-7 and 96, DEP File Number SE17476. New Leaf has requested a continuance until August 17. Is there a motion?
Motion to continue to 8/17, ENRAD application by Dean Smith of New Leaf Dyton Energy Storage One.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, review, discuss, and act on a continued hearing. It's an ENRAD application by RJR Properties, Zero Old Horton Street, Map Seven Lots 36 and 36-1, DEP File Number 17-475. And we have a, our environmental peer review who has submitted a scope amendment for the peer review. Okay, Brandon, you want to identify yourself to the audience?
Chairman Brandon Fanaf, RJR, representing RJR Properties. Okay, so Lisa's been very diligent about trying to get in touch with RJR, myself and the, the engineer, about getting Martin over, Kresha, $1,800. And also getting the additional information that was requested. And I've wanted to answer, but I can't answer unless I first talk to my client, like, what do you want to do? I can't put words in them. And then we haven't been able to get in touch with him because the owner of RJR is a guy named Rob Russell, and he owns Westport Vineyards. And he is now in the, you know, the height of his busy season doing that. And it's been just about impossible to get in touch with him. I finally got in touch with him today at 4:00.
Wow.
Yeah.
Hopefully you had a glass of wine at the same time.
I wasn't at the vineyard. So I said, Rob, what are we doing here? And he says, ah, I've been so busy, and, you know, he gave me that runaround. And I said, well, what do I say when they say you gotta, you gotta pay the consultant? He said, well, give me a little more time, I'm, I'm busy at the moment. And I said, well, all right, what about the other stuff? He says, I don't even have time to think about it right now. Because we were doing this over the winter and the spring. We expected it to be over in the spring, and obviously it's not over the spring because of differences in opinion of what we're, we're seeing out there that's required more work. And now we're past a period where he really has the time to focus on it. So he implores the commission to please continue instead and a little longer, preferably into the fall, as long as you are comfortable and not close it and deny it.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, we'll, we'll continue it.
Okay.
Now, you've got the list from Marty of what
What's required.
she's looking for and, and what needs to be searched out. And certainly, it's to your advantage to make sure, you know, because some, some of these, the stream, the potentials, the stream that's there, potential vernal pools, certainly they carry 200-foot limits which may extend beyond the
This is true.
wetlands, and, and that's to your advantage to be safe rather than refiling sometime for individual lots. So.
Right, well, there's, there's, there's one snag with the vernal pool anyway. It's on the neighbor's yard. And the last time I was here, we left and we were having a discussion on the porch, and I saw these, this nice couple there waiting. I said, you know, you waiting for us? And they said, yes. And they're, and, and I said, what can I do for you? She said, are you going to stop coming onto my land now? I said, you know, who are you? We're the people next door and we saw you walking around. Whole bunch of people, it was the day that we were there with Marty. He says, we don't want you on our property anymore. It's now your property, get off. So in order to identify the extents of the vernal pool, it's going to be difficult because they don't want us on their property. The best I think we're going to be able to do is in area photograph interpretation.
Okay, well, I'm sure that you and Marty can come to a solution on that and maybe if necessary, I could make a visit to the individuals.
That's your call.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay.
The only thing I have is that in order for Marty to, you know, continue, she needs to be funded. So we can continue, but until Marty gets funded, we're really not going anywhere.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're going anywhere because, because Mr. Russell is, is busy doing his vineyard company right now.
But he'll be like that through the fall, I bet.
Probably, probably. So as, as long as you're willing to continue it into the fall, Mr. Russell would appreciate it.
Should we table it until September?
Now, the one concern that I have just from a procedural standpoint is I was reading through our conservation bylaw today, and I believe that we do only have 10 business days from the date of initial request to, from the date of request for payment for the 53G replenishment. We only have 10 business days before we're required to deny it.
Oh.
That was my understanding of it.
That's in the bylaw?
Unless I misread it, unless, unless it was a misreading.
It, it, it's in, in the town bylaw, but not the conservation bylaw. Okay.
The town by, oh, okay. What town bylaw, like the town's constitution or what?
I was reading through the conservation bylaw today in the town. Let's see, it's online, I'll see if I can find it real quick.
Yeah, because I, that's not something I remember.
Yeah, and like, like I said, if I, that's my only concern is I'm, I'm hoping that I misread it, but I was reading through it today, actually, as a fresher.
Okay, well, well then.
It would be on page one, right? That's where we talk about fees.
I'm, I'm just scanning it so fast that I could miss it.
Yes, the commission shall require the payment of the consultant fee prior to the initiation of consulting services. Failure by the applicant to pay the consultant fee specified by the commission within 10 business days of the request for payment or refusal of payment shall be cause for the commission to deny the application based on lack of sufficient information to evaluate whether the project meets applicable performance standards in 310 CMR 10.1 and the Dyton Wetlands Protection Bylaw or its regulations.
Okay, shall be cause.
Yes, that shall not be requirement, so if one's otherwise comfortable, which I think, given the reasons that he operates.
So, so if it doesn't say it, we must deny it.
Right.
I also heard a key word, the key word was initiation of services. The services were, were, have been initiated.
Since May, yeah.
They're, they're ongoing, so I think that might be another reason.
Well, we're, you know, I, I think we're all in agreement here to say, continue it until.
All right.
But funding would be.
Yeah. Well, I can't write the check for him.
All right, understood, understood.
Yeah, as, as long as you keep this down to the road, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sure, so, okay, so shall we go to September then?
Sure.
Okay, do you know our meeting day in September?
September, gosh, it seems so far away.
Yeah, it does.
Dire straits.
Deputy the 28th?
You got it. You got it.
21st.
21st.
Okay.
Oh, 21st, thank you.
Okay, so we'll continue until September 21st.
Motion to continue till September 21st, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too, thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
9/21, right?
Yeah.
Okay, a notice of intent application by Robert J. Russell III at Zero Old Horton Street, Map Seven Lot 36 for construction of a single-family house with septic system. A portion of the work is within the buffer zone to the wetland resource area. File Number 17-481, ADE Incorporated Incorporated has requested a continuance to August 17.
Motion to continue to 8/17/2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, notice of intent application by Robert Martin at 1035 William Street for after-the-fact permit for garage site improvements, including a driveway landscaping, above-ground pool clearing and grading of dead trees, as well as some invasives, a new fence and restoration planting. A portion of the proposed work is within the regulated wetland buffer zone, DEP File Number 17-480. Is anyone here to represent Mr. Martin? Okay, this is, because of the interaction that we have had, it would probably behoove us to reject this plan, deny the application. We were all there at the site two weeks ago. We know the outcome, the, the demeanor of the situation, and it wasn't hopeful. The only way that we can really do this is to reject the application and see what follows. And I think that we have another item so situated on page three of the agenda. Lisa, that's all in the purview of what we've discussed, to reject the application for.
Doesn't, doesn't meet the, the local bylaw requirements. The, the garage is in our 50-foot no-build zone and the, the work is
Within the 25-foot no-touch zone.
No desert, no disturb.
Okay, and so the
A portion of the work, sorry.
Okay, so what we're looking for is a rejection of the notice of intent because it does not meet the performance standards of the Dyton bylaws.
Has there been any further correspondence from this applicant, Lisa?
Uh, no, not since the site visit.
Okay, no representative or anything like that?
No. I just had a brief conversation at Prospect Street, so he said, we'll let the courts handle it, so, with Mr. Drake, the consultant, so.
Okay. Is there a motion then to deny the project?
It would be under the local bylaw.
Because it does not stand to the local bylaws. Either you guys can make a motion?
Aye, Paul.
I don't see how we have any other choice. I would, motion to
Okay.
Motion to deny the application.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Quite unfortunate, I thought we had something squared away, but, okay.
I have 21 days to issue that, just so you guys know, and I will need signatures. So I'll be in touch with that.
Okay. Notice of intent application by James Logan, Zero Prospect Street, Map Four Lot 370 for a single-family house with amenities which include a garage, gravel driveway, and sewer and water connections at the street. A portion of the project is within the regulated 100-foot buffer zone to the boarding vegetated wetland and an intermittent stream. A portion of the project is within an estimated habitat rare wildlife as designated on the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. Okay. A Massachusetts Endangered Species application was filed by applicant. Okay, the file number is 17-483. Okay.
How you doing? I'm Jason Youngquist from Outback Engineering. As you recall from the last hearing, Lisa was going to go out to the site and do an inspection and check the wetland flags with our wetland scientist, Greg Drake. That happened a couple of weeks ago. And from that meeting, some flags were moved up in the northeast corner of the property and revised the plans to reflect those new wetland flags and adjusted the limit of work and the house location to make sure we met the requirements of the town bylaw. At the same time, they went and checked out the, what at the time we were calling intermittent stream that sits out in the wetlands. There was water in it at the time. There's water everywhere right now. So instead of waiting to find four days where it's not, we just showed it as a perennial stream with the top of bank flags. We adjusted a little grading a little bit, so we have all our work outside the 200-foot auto-repairing zone.
How large is the lot?
10 acres.
10 acres, okay.
So we are one house in a very small corner of it, so it's a lot.
I realize that, so, so most of it will be left as natural.
It is, it's very wet. So, you know, farther down it gets, that, that stream turns into a definite perennial stream, and it gets, it gets wetter. So it's just utilizing the upland portion in Prospect Street, so it definitely sets aside a lot of land that's not going to be disturbed.
Okay. Lisa, do you have any comments for us since you did the site visit?
Yeah, no, so the, well, the flags were moved, which is, is great. So the other things were the silt fence that you mentioned. We really have been shying away from the silt fence because the installers never seem to do it right. We really liked the compost filter sock, filter check, so if you could change that.
Yeah, that's just something we can put in the order of conditions and
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's good if it was on the plan too, but
And then we have signs going up as well to, to let them know in the future that, hey, there's wetlands out here, conservation areas, so.
So are the signs going to go on a fence, are they going to go on posts?
Posts.
Okay.
Okay, you have any questions?
I think I still need paper copies of the final.
Okay, I thought you dropped them off, but we can get those to you.
I don't, I don't have them here, but
Ideally, we could, you know, the commission is, is leaning that way, is close the hearing, and we could give you those plans with that change to
I, I think so, unless there's questions from the commission and the audience.
No, we were out there, I mean.
You're all set? Any questions from the audience? Okay, is there a motion to
Just one quick question. Natural Heritage, what did they tell you again?
That was a note take letter, we discussed that previously.
Just making sure.
Okay.
So would you be comfortable with like a subject to approval or is that what we're talking about? Subject to the revision of the silt fence to the compost sock and
That would be written in the order of conditions.
Yeah, I mean, I do like it on the plan because whoever gets the plan to do the work before they jump the gun and start doing the silt fence.
Yeah, we have to get your paper copies anyways, we could just
I just need one, paper copy.
And Lisa, you will deal with those packets of the
Yep.
Okay, that, that'll be written into the order as well.
Yeah, the only other thing was the wetland flags beyond this limit of wetland line approval.
Yeah, that should be noted in the order of conditions as well.
Yeah, they're not verified because the site was so large, we figured we didn't need to go into the swamp, you know? I mean, we, we went in the swamp.
Okay. Do I have a motion to
Motion to accept the notice of intent application with conditions of
An issue and order of condition.
Issue of order of conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I have 21 days, probably take at least two weeks to do this, so.
And we're switching to silt fence to silt sock, right?
Compost filter sock, please.
Compost filter sock, okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Are you leaving now or are you hanging? No, I didn't.
I'm leaving.
Oh, okay, all right. Take a look at the last tree on the right as you're going out.
Did I hit it when I pulled in?
No.
It's awesome.
It's a chestnut tree.
No, I just see that parcel of property and I'm thinking, that's all.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Jason. Okay, we have a notice of intent application by Robert Brimmer, 2050 Horton Street, Map Seven Lot 26-02 for a proposed corrective action plan and after-the-fact filing, proposed corrective action plan to address a previous violation. The corrective action is permitting existing construction, constructed structures within resource areas, establishing posts with signs and allowing for a revegetation plan. Corrective action to be performed within 100 feet of a vegetated wetland and within 200 feet of a perennial stream within outstanding resource water-protected area, DEP File Number 17. And do you have DEP file number seventeen, and do you have the
Zero forty, zero, four eighty-six.
I'm sorry, zero what?
Four eight six.
Four eight six?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, there, okay, yeah, it's, okay.
Good evening. Good evening. Mark Mariano with Oak Hill Engineering, representing Robert Brimmer of 2050 Horton Street. Last meeting, we opened this project and we previewed. There isn't much scope of work that's occurring other than allowing areas to revegetate, which they have been naturally throughout the the winter, I mean, through the wet summer, and establishing some signs. The last last meeting, we had some questions that DEP asked, which we have sent responses to. They have also sent the DEP number and issuance, and I believe, Lisa, did you get a chance to go to the site?
Yeah, I went to the site yesterday with one of the members, Mr. Phillips.
Did you have any questions?
No. Everything looked like
Vegetated.
Vegetating and growing the way it's supposed to.
Yep.
Like, I like, well, everything's growing, let's face it.
So, I mean, the only real work that is occurring on the site is installing the wetland signs and posts.
Okay.
And, yeah, reestablishing the 25-foot.
Yep, and that's where we have set the posts, they're at the 25-foot.
So the 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 structure, the permitting, the structure we're permitting is the what do you, what would you call that? Lean to with no foundation?
I called it the existing barn.
Yeah, okay. It's not even really a barn, it's more, you know.
Lean to, I I kinda think that that works for me.
I can update that language on the plan as well, just to say lean to.
Yeah, I would, and then, and also the the board, you got over the stream, so.
The walking bridge?
Walking bridge.
Yeah, that's what I have at Legal Daze.
Okay. And so do you wanna just outline what Whitney had asked and your responses for the
Yeah, I don't have that with me.
I got it.
Okay, good.
Is this the one that I sent prior to DEP? This is the one I had. Yep, so she she had asked a detailed narrative on the proposed work. What would be constructed may be helpful in determining the temporary and permanent resource area impacts as well as compliance. What I explained to Whitney at DEP was the proposed work is to just install the delineation signs, the four-by-four posts with with signs. The work would be performed with a with a post, postal digger, so it will be put into a wheelbarrow, so I mean, we're talking minimal minimal disturbance here. The permitting is after the fact, the vegetation has regrown and is restored within the buffer zone. She also, the next question was mass mapper shows the entire area where the footpath will be located within BVW. If there is any fill associated with the creation of the path, a 401 water quality certification is required for fill in BVW within an outsourcing, within within an outstanding resource area. So the current walking path still has the AO layer, so no fill has really been added or altered in that in that sense, so those were my direct responses to DEP on that. Thanks, Lisa.
No problem. The only question I had was when that just to look at this plan.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
The one I was trying to include data forms and I'm comfortable with us permitting this. I wanna call it a lean to, whatever the heck. These two structures as after the fact. I don't have any, it's not like we have to even ask for seed because the site stabilized.
Okay, but you still have to do an order of conditions.
Have to do an order of conditions.
There'll still be a procedure where he has to put in the signs, then we'll be back in front of you for a COC.
Okay, all right, so we are essentially set. You have any questions?
I don't know if anyone else has any questions.
Anyone else?
Sorry, I need to have a program now, buddy. Do I have to put signs on the field side also?
No, we're not proposing that, because that's allowed to revegetate.
Okay, I didn't, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
I mean, for all the people that are gonna come in from that side. No.
I didn't know it was for people to, I didn't know.
It's just to remind you that that's a no-disturb zone.
Yeah. What what ends up happening is, you know, when you sell the house, people don't know that, and then they just end up going into it. That's one of the biggest reasons for doing it.
They force, and that won't be sold. Generation to generation.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, motion to accept notice of intent application by Robert Brimmer
An issue
With order of conditions. Issue order of conditions, sorry.
It's okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, a request for a termination of applicability from Adam Gintt, Mailing City Solar for a property owned by David Prairie at 2204 Maple Swamp Road, lot, map one, lot four, North Dyton, to install a residential ground-mounted solar panel system in retaining wall. A portion of the work falls within the 100-foot buffer zone.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
That's it, it's a, so we have a solar ground mount system, 30 panels, adjacent to an existing driveway. It's beyond 200 feet from the riverfront area, 100 feet from the wet zone buffer. Here to get a permit.
Okay.
Did you have copies of the plan with you, or no?
I left the three copies.
Yeah.
I have an extra one here.
Yeah, I haven't
I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
And you sent payment, correct?
Thank you very much.
So I did walk the wetland edge in vicinity of the project. There's also a river, but
This is one of those family lots, are they called?
Yep, yep. Not sure exactly the correct terminology.
Estate lots.
I believe so.
Is that a state lot?
I know that David owns his property and his parents' property below that.
His parents own the property to the south.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's a 200-foot riverfront on here as well. And so my question was whether or not there would be any work in the riverfront, and David has ensured me that no. And the riverfront line is on here. They're not in a flood zone with any of the work. All the work is gonna go in within an existing lawn area, correct?
Correct.
Yep, yep.
Are these raised panels, or are they gonna be close to the ground?
Uh, so it'll be about 24 inches off the ground at 30 degrees, one array, right on the edge of the driveway.
And no tree removal, and there's also the retaining wall that they're proposing.
Okay, seems quite safe.
So what are you gonna build the retaining wall out of, stone, or?
Yeah, it's probably the voltage of my brother's property next door.
Do you have to bring in any fill for that?
No.
The only thing I would add is that we would, we always like erosion controls, so if you could add a little erosion control below the retaining wall.
Is that erosion control?
I'm sure your father can get his hands on some stuff for you.
Erosion control, we have lots of work next door.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that could, that would be, write that into the order and
Well, there's no order because this is an RDA.
Okay, all right.
And this and this item cannot be continued because it's an RDA. So either we issue him a negative determination saying that he's good to go with this, and he agrees to put in erosion controls, or we issue him a positive and say you have to file an notice of intent for this work.
Well, I don't think that's necessary.
It's not necessary.
But if we give a negative determination and then you submit an erosion control, and not siltation fence, but a, you like
Compost filter sock?
Yeah, we already have a compost sock, it's already in the
Okay, all right, so that's gonna make it easy.
Yeah, it's already done.
So if you wanna just sketch it on here, I know this is, this is not, you know, this isn't stamped by anyone, this is just a copy of his.
We can note on the site plan for the solar application, the, we can include that same property plan showing the barriers and the boundaries, and then note that there will be the erosion control on the
Yeah, and the erosion controls shall serve as the limit of work, so, okay.
All right, motion
To To issue a negative determination.
Motion to give a negative determination.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Just give me, next week I should have it, as long as I get signatures, okay?
Okay. We have these here. Okay.
All right, moving on.
Okay, you all set, Lisa?
Yep.
Okay. Review Act Discuss Act on a New Hearing Notice of Intent Application from Charles Roberts Federal National Mortgage Company at 1969 Horton Street, North Dyton. Work includes the upgrading of a failed septic system with septic tank, pump tank, retaining walls, leach field, and associated grading. A portion of the work falls on the buffer zone to a bordering vegetated wetland and riverfront area to the Papa Squash River. The applicant also proposes to restore a portion of the riverfront area and buffer zone that was disturbed by the previous owner to its pre-existing state. DEP file number seventeen, and we need an update on the number.
Yeah, zero four eight seven, and they did request a continuance.
Right, zero four eight seven, they did, okay.
And the reason for the continuance is there is out, some outstanding questions from DEP, so if anyone's here for this one, we'll definitely be looking at it next month.
Okay.
Motion to continue to eight seventeen, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, David.
Okay. Now, Review Act Discuss Act on a New Hearing Notice of Intent from Tom Ferry, Town of Dyton, DPW Director for a municipal Main Street roadway project including the construction of a five-foot wide sidewalk and drainage improvements along an existing 1.8-mile section of Main Street from the intersection of Williams Street to the intersection of Elm Street. A portion of this work falls in the buffer zone of a bordering vegetated wetland, riverfront area to Sally Richmond Brook and Muddy Cove Brook, and within the bordering land subject to flooding. DEP file number seventeen dash four eighty-five. Okay, we're going to open the hearing, but we're gonna have to continue.
Yes.
These two gentlemen live on Main Street, and they need clearance from the state to act upon this issue.
Yes, we are abutters to the Main Street project, which we had a conversation with the Mass State Ethics Commission, who said that all abutters are considered to have a potential inherent conflict of interest on any project which they abut. However, there are some necessities where sometimes somebody may need to to deliberate on a matter which they're an abutter, for example, this. However, we've submitted, we've submitted disclosures of this potential conflict of interest to our appointing authority, which is the Board of Selectmen. Once they've had the opportunity to review that, they'll make a determination on whether we're able to to deliberate on this.
Dave, did you do that yet?
Yeah, I did get the forms, I haven't filled them out or anything.
Do it. Probably have to do it for Monday, right, because there's a meeting on
Yes, correct. I've submitted mine already, and mine is on the agenda for the for the Wednesday meeting, and if, Dave, if you need any help or if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
No.
Oh, also Main Street?
Oh, no, when I went through it, because there's a slide. See, Mark was there, so we just gave it to Mark. There's a form to fill. But we don't have to do it as a, so you gotta get the form.
Okay. Okay, so there was a motion to continue? You making the motion?
Yep, motion to continue to eight seventeen, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a request for a certificate of compliance from Stone Gate Landing LLC, nine eighty-three Stone Gate Landing, map nine, lot two S seventeen dash four four five. Lisa, you wanna tell us what is going on there?
Yeah, we'll put that one on hold, because there's a pile of material on the south end of the lot that I asked Mr. Federoff to remove, that he hadn't removed. So I followed up with him last week, and I haven't heard back, so. I told him we weren't, would not issue it until that was taken care of.
Okay, so motion to to continue the request?
Motion to continue the request on Stone Gate Landing until eight seventeen, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Review Discuss Act Request for Certificate of Compliance from Kevin and Alexandra Messier of nine twenty-one Williams Street, map eight, lot eighteen dash two, DEP file number seventeen three one two. Lisa, you have been to the site and
Uh, yeah, we received an as-built and a letter from Proline. So I did do a site visit with Proline on July 11th. So for the record, the letter from Proline.
Okay, so this is, certificate of compliance is to be issued?
Yep, so the the letter from Proline stated that the original notice of intent, the driver was proposed as gravel, but it's actually asphalt. So this is a couple discrepancies from the original, but the deck in the rear of the dwelling is larger than proposed, and the patio and the gardening area and the shed were not included on the original plan. None of these fall within the 100-foot buffer zone, and therefore should not have any adverse effect on, impact on the resource areas. A fire area and landscape area was also not shown on the original plan and has been constructed partially within the 100-foot wetland, but all within the lawn. Since the, these items are protected from wetland resources by a stone wall, it is expected that adverse impacts from these items, if any, would be extremely minimal. So I'm fine with signing off on this one.
Okay, is there a motion to issue a certificate of compliance?
Motion to accept a certificate of compliance for Kevin and
Alexandra.
Alexandra Messier.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Review Discuss Act on a Request for Certificate of Compliance from Jeffrey Rodrick's 2040 County Street, DEP file number seventeen dash four sixty-two. Again, Lisa, this goes to your inspection.
Yep, so there is nothing built on, within the 100-foot buffer zone on this property, what this project Um, what this project included was restoration of the wetlands, and including removal of a tractor that's probably been there for over twenty years. Um, restoration, uh, included removal of debris and seeding the area, including, um, they also included posts with our markers, our placards.
Yeah.
Uh, it all looks good to me, they, they resurfaced the parking area, it's now gravel. There is a building, but the building is outside our buffer zone, so, I had signed off on that building permit.
Okay, motion to issue a certificate of compliance?
Motion to issue a certificate of compliance for Jeffrey Rodriguez, Rigus.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Review Discuss Act Request for Certificate of Compliance from the Totten Yacht Club, twenty-one twenty-five and twenty-nine seventy-five Water Street. Uh, map twenty, lot six dash eight dash oh one, DEP file number seventeen dash four seven seven.
Do you want to come up and say anything, or?
For a long fifteen years. Uh, my name is Robert Bedad, I represent the Totten Yacht Club, and, uh, I am the secretary of the club as well. And, uh, I think, uh, we did a good job of doing what we needed to do as far as the order of compliance goes, and, uh, the vegetation is growing very well, and the poster in place, and the markers are on them.
Looks good.
Yeah.
I've been by there too, and, uh, uh, everything looks, uh, like, like it should.
So the site stabilized, and I did a site visit on July tenth, and, um, I recommend that you sign off on this.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to issue a certificate of compliance to the Totten Yacht Club?
Motion to, uh, issue a certificate of compliance to the Totten Yacht Club.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a great night, thank you very much.
As well, good to see you.
Alright, and if you want to take it with you, actually, I have two, two copies, so, they just have to sign both, so.
Is this somebody's?
Sign one of these now.
Okay.
On, through this?
Okay, and then, now, did you do two of them?
Yeah. Yes, you can sign.
No.
I think we all signed those.
No, wait, is that one, uh? No, this is, this is one, this is for the, um, wait a minute, what's this, this here?
This is the second one.
Yep.
So excited to be able to sign this time, I haven't got television.
Yeah, I did. Uh, you have to sign this one here. Gee, we're going through with this in record, uh, okay.
Alright, next.
Okay, zero Horton Street, map ten, uh, lot fifty-three enforcement order issued eleven twenty-eight, uh, twenty-two. Site has been flagged, site visit, uh, was on March ninth. Uh, we were told expect restoration plan ASAP. Uh, letter sent, six one, sent via certified mail. Fines at the rate of three hundred dollars a, a day will begin on July fifteen. Should we not receive a satisfactory rest, restoration plan?
Okay, so this one, um, instead of issuing fines on a daily basis, because I can't do that, I'm gonna issue them like I did for Cedar, on a weekly basis, beginning on Monday, so, um.
I, wait, I assume you're not here to, okay.
No. Um, okay, so, so just for an update for that one, so you guys know, I sent the letter. I'm sorry, I didn't send a letter. This isn't what I said. I need to es- start issuing the fines on Monday.
Okay, this is the, lives in Somerset.
Right, so the constable I was gonna use only delivers to Dighton. They're not like countywide constable, which I feel like that would make more sense. It's based on the town, so I have to call Somerset to get a constable to deliver in Somerset, and they'll have to pick up here, or I can bring it to them in Somerset.
Okay, so that'll take place Monday, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so that, so fines, uh, will begin at, and, uh, that'll go per, per week, okay.
And the date of Monday is the twenty-fourth.
So they will go?
On a weekly basis. Mark, the town clerk was very helpful with these, so I'm gonna have to utilize Becky.
Okay, um, next item, twenty-three seventy-one County Street, map twenty, lot sixty-five enforcement order issued, uh, four one twenty-one, DEP visited site on four twenty-seven twenty-two. Request for letter to be sent by the Board of Selectmen to DEP. Letter sent to DEP by, uh, Mr. Michael Mullin on four twenty-six and on seven seventeen, you have an update for us?
He has not got a response, I guess the person was on vacation, so he was hoping to get a response. I did see the email.
Okay, uh, we're back to ten thirty-five Williams Street. Uh, letter issued four twenty-eight. Site visit with Outback Engineer and owner on three fifteen. Public hearing opened, uh, on four twenty. Site visit conducted seven six twenty-three. Um, okay, we, uh, on our previous item, we rejected their application, and, uh, um.
Would you like to issue an enforcement order?
Well, we're gonna have to, he's in our buffer zone, he's in our no-build zone. Uh, we offered a, I thought, a, a, a very, um, satisfactory solution to the problem, and it was rejected. Uh, can, can I assume that you two are in agreement with, uh, um, my words that I just said, that were there on the solution, the poss, uh, of letting him get into the backyard and with his trailers and, um, and doing?
Well, good. The fact that there's no communication tonight shows that, that we're not going to have a choice to, we won't have the option to do nothing. Um, but that said, it's just a point of order, this is just the agent update, so that would, something that I believe would have to be on the agenda for August.
Well, I mean, I can issue the enforcement order according to the bylaw. And then you guys can ratify it at the next meeting. I'm just letting you know I'm gonna.
Yeah, okay, uh, that, that sounds satisfactory.
Okay.
Because, um, um, we got nowhere, and I thought that was, I thought the, the solution offered was quite generous.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so.
It's too bad I had to come to you.
As an agent, you can issue the enforcement order, then we will ratify it.
Yeah.
Next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, zero Horton Street again, map seven, lot twenty-six enforcement order restoration. Agent spoke with wetland consultant on, uh, July eleventh, uh, and site visit on July nineteenth, um.
Yep, so this is.
You have an update for us?
This is the Ribero property, um, they had previously gotten, uh, okay from you guys for a restoration plan for the disturbed area on the property along Horton Street. Um, since then, they have not done anything with the restoration. However, it has grown in, um, but none of the fill has been removed. So there's tar, and there's piles of trees that they had cut down, piles of dirt, and I expressed to them my concern about that being fill, and that needs to be removed from the buffer zone, and it needs to be planted, so we get a forested area back, which we had before.
Yeah, okay, so, uh.
I told them that they need to come back to the Conservation Commission to look at the new revised restoration plan, so that's gonna be forthcoming.
Okay, and so, uh, let us, uh, say, if you're gonna get in touch with Tom Schultz again, and are you, are, you already did this?
I already told him, I already told him to come back.
And so, um, if they don't.
Dave was with me too.
Okay, so if they don't act positively, because this was a great, great year to, to, to do plantings and, uh, whether it be trees or whatever, uh, um.
Yeah, much better than last year.
I mean, this, we haven't had a year this wet in, in many, many years, um, and, and it's being squandered. Um, that if nothing happens within the next month, then we might have to take more action.
Well, I told him, when they come back to us, we need a timeline to tell us when you plan to do this restoration, not open-ended.
Okay. You've been sitting back there very patiently for, and, and.
Yeah, we can jump ahead.
If you want, it's, it's up to you, I'm happy to.
Oh, you, you, you're happy? Uh, I don't know where you are on the, uh, on the list.
Last, I can go last.
He, he owns five ninety-two Old Somerset Ave. He's the written-in one.
I don't have that on my. Oh, I see, okay. Uh, let's see.
So.
Motion to take out of order?
This is up, this is under agent discussion, so as I expressed to Mr. Benby that this is not a public hearing by any means or anything like that, um, but I did let him know I was, I had it under agent, agent discussion if he would like to be present, um. So we sent a notice of potential violation out on June. Motion for.
Okay, motion, motion on the floor to take out of order, is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay, uh, Lisa, uh, five ninety-two.
So, yeah, potential violation letter was sent on June twenty-eighth, uh, due to some clearing on a lot that, um, had a buffer zone and a bordering vegetated wetland. Um, since then, I've received plans, um, I was pinned on the permit link, building permit application as well. Uh, however, I brought to the engineers, uh, or surveyors' attention that there was a stream in that wetland, and, um, it was later determined that the stream is intermittent, not perennial. So the stream will have a one-hundred-foot, and the wetland will have a one-hundred-foot. My site visit I conducted last week determined that although they show on the plan the work is a hundred and two feet, or the clearing is a hundred and two feet off, uh, the wetland, there's actually a wetland that continues at the south end that was probably off-site, but the buffer zone would extend on the lot. So I expressed this to Mr. Benby. I asked, I tried to call his surveyor, Mr. Talman, a number of times, and I got his voicemail, I didn't get him. But he, I'm, I'm fine with him, you know, speaking at this point, if he would like to give an update on his project.
So, I spoke to my engineer, and he, uh, went out there this morning, revised the plan, keeping us a hundred foot off the buffer.
Okay.
Maybe a hundred off the wetlands, and he, uh, so, if our law office is in place, we can move it, obviously, we'll move it. Oh, sure, sure.
So, the sequence of events is, we had the wetlands delineated in March. We had our site plan drawn, and then our contractor, and we submitted for permitting. Our contractor thinking that permitting was imminent decided that since we were out of the buffer zone, he cleared what he thought was outside of the buffer zone. Well, come to find out, he was, our, our wetland specialist missed the southern wetlands that was created from the medical buildings runoff from the, uh, from the parking lot. Now, what we're proposing to build, it, it is a single-family home, but it looks a little different than a single-family home, because what we're proposing to build is a group home for people with disabilities. And so, first off, I want to apologize again for doing the clearing. I, uh, former resident of Dighton for twenty years and planning board chairman, I, I mean, I know better, I thought my contractor did, so again, I apologize.
Okay, so, um, is any?
Don't have to discuss this in any way, shape, or form right now, and I would recommend that we don't, because this is not on the agenda.
Okay, so, now, are you gonna, is you gonna need to file with us eventually?
I, I think what I need to do is communicate with Mr. Talman and Mr. Benby, uh, because I still have concerns, because it looks like they used the old wetland line for that portion. However, it does come up a little closer, um, and I want to know specifically, did he move the limit of work? Like you said, we could, you could probably.
Yeah, the plan is, the, the, the plans show that it's been moved considerably.
So I'll compare this plan to the other.
To the previous plan, and you'll, you'll see that, I went back and forth on the PDF, and it's considerably further away.
Okay, sure, so if you can stay outside the one-hundred, and I do the site visit, and we determine you're outside the one-hundred, then you won't have to file with Conservation, okay?
Alright, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, well, that would be nice. Okay, alright, uh, we will go back to our.
I'll take another one now, thank you.
Let's go back to our, our original order now, um.
Nineteen forty county, so we're at.
Uh, zero Williams Street, map twenty-one, lot thirty-four dash two. Letter sent, uh, June second. Notice of violation met with owner and stormwater agent, uh, on, on February sixteen. Restoration plan received, needs agent review and discussion at August meeting.
Yeah, that's about it, it in a nutshell.
Okay.
I think you skipped twenty fifty Horton, which we can now take off, because he just got approval from Conservation.
Okay, nineteen forty County Street, uh, that's five oh eight Customs, map seventeen, lot seventy-nine. Letter sent, uh, March twenty-third. Outback is revering a site plan, no new update.
I have an update. I sent a letter yesterday, I think you guys remember, you voted at the last meeting for me to send another letter, and I had not had time to do it, but I sent one yesterday via certified mail, so, um.
Is this something we, uh, since it just came in today, should we, uh, wait to act on it till?
You don't have to act on anything, I just sent a, a second letter reminding him as a follow-up from the March letter, and that should we not receive a complete notice of intent with site plan by April sixteen, the commission may consider initiating our enforcement authority, and I included the enforcement section, so. I'm sure I'll be hearing from him next. So I'm sure I'll be hearing from him next week. But hopefully, we get something by August 16th. Our meeting's the 17th, and we'd be able to make a decision if we want to move on anything like that.
Okay, so, so that, so that will be August 7th. We will, okay, so further action would be taken at that time if we do not hear from them?
Yep.
That's 17, right? Yeah, August 17. Okay, 880 Hot Street. Notice of violation, letter 2123, and site visit on 215 and 411. Agent spoke with attorney Mitchell on July 5th and provided him with the information.
Yep.
Okay, so that's, that's that for now. 700 Main Street. Map 17 lot 300. Complaint of wetland bank alteration. Certified notice of violation sent 222. Return to us unclaimed. Second letter sent 330. Required response by 310 and attendance by, and 420. Site visit 418, and you have no new update.
Yeah, there's no new update on this.
Okay, 670 Main Street. Map 17 lot 133 and zero Main Street. Map 17 lot 130. Complaint received involving bank and land underwater to Muddy Cove Brook. Letter sent 3822. Requested response by 318, and attendance in meeting, no new update. This is, these two are related to the same incident?
Same stream.
Yeah.
Muddy Cove Brook. No new update. Really, you know, I think it would be wise for Dave and I had spoken about doing a site visit out at this area, so I think we should do that sooner than later. We're gonna make it a priority. I know there's a lot going on, but...
Okay. 1420 Williams Street. New violation discovered on this property when conducting site visit on Clayway Sola. Hand letter delivered 38. Site visit, okay, 36, your update?
No update. I reached out to Mr. Rujo, and I don't have, there's no update, so...
Okay. Has anything been done that, that's visible to be cleared? Have they started doing anything?
They started removing the fill pile. But see, the fill pile, it's tricky because this is a farming operation, and it's commercial farming. Commercial farming is exempt from wetlands protection, but not under the local bylaw.
Okay, but that's only old farm activity. If you start new farm activity, you can't do any filling.
Right, so this is a new area of disturbance and cutting. So Mr. Rujo was aware that he would need to hire. He had a wetland consultant in mind, and he said he was reaching out to them for restoration.
Okay.
I will follow up with him, try to follow up with him. I'm sure he's really busy. You know, this all happened like, you know, beginning of spring, and now I'm sure he's a little less busy, but...
Okay, 485 Tremont Street. Extensive cleaning. A portion may be in the buffer zone to a regulated wetland and in NHESP-mapped priority habitat. Recommend sending a letter. Okay, now, when we spoke, did, did... Has a letter already been sent by another department as well?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, so it, it doesn't, so we should send one out as well?
We received a copy of a letter sent July 5th from the Stormwater Committee to Mr. Elves. We write to invite you to attend the next meeting of the Stormwater Committee scheduled for Wednesday, July 19th at 1:00 p.m. The meeting will beha, will be held in the upper level of Old Town Hall located at 1111 Somerset Ave across from the post office. The committee would like to discuss the amount of land clearing you have done and the prevalence of endangered species in this area. Please confirm your availability by calling. And if you are not available in person, we can arrange for you to attend via Zoom if you have access by computer or phone. Signed by Nancy Gulat Chairman and Thomas Farrel Clark. So, yeah, we, I...
So that was, that, that occurred yesterday, or, or the proposed meeting occurred yesterday. And so we don't have any results on that, but it wouldn't, it would...
No, I do know he did not attend.
Okay.
We do know that. So when we send the letter, I think we should also send a copy to Natural Heritage.
Okay, okay, that sounds quite appropriate. Is there a motion to send a letter of possible violation to Mr. Elves at 485 Tremont Street?
Motion to send a letter to Mr. Elves on 485 Tremont Street.
Just as a point of order, are we able to hold a motion now during an agent update?
I can just send the letter. I honestly don't need you guys to do anything, so...
Okay, all right, yeah. He's right, as far as agent, and then we have to, just, we would verify it next, next meeting.
Okay.
This would be like a, an enforcement order, but not as strong.
Got it.
Okay. All right, so, yes. And complaint received regarding 568 Hot Street cutting and clearing.
Yeah, they're actually not here, but the Duarts, when I was doing an inspection for their certificate of compliance last month, they complained about the neighbor across the street at 568 doing some cutting. And when I looked across the street, I saw exactly what they were talking about. I know we've had this issue before with them, and we've told them that they are, although they are a commercial farm, they really need to come to Concom to notify us before they start doing any work like that.
So if a letter went out saying that prior to any work, you, you must notify the commission. I mean, we did that with, with someone down by the river. They were cutting the invasive species, which, which, I mean, we, we agreed was, was okay.
Yeah.
But we don't want people to be calling in and then having to run out there all the time.
Right.
To, to inspect for something that, that is okay. I mean, at this point...
There's also a river down there. I think it may be a perennial stream. I'm not...
I would say it is. It starts on the, on the, I'm gonna say the north side of the street. There's a pool.
The north side of the street's intermittent, but I think it may turn perennial.
But then that flows into that, into that pool.
Yeah.
Which releases water continuously.
Right.
And that whole hill drains into that pool underground. I mean, there, there is so much ledge there.
Right.
That whatever flows in. Okay, if you were to do a letter of, of possible violation.
Okay.
And...
Yep.
Because this, something like this was done several months ago, am I correct?
Yep.
And, and that's when they were requested to notify the commission of any further cutting or anything else so that we, we didn't have this problem. Okay. Wow, do we have any public input?
Actually, I have something. Leonard Hall, 760 Main Street type. I heard you mention earlier in the meeting of a possible conservation bylaw that might be in conflict with wording with a town bylaw. If there were any notice that you wanted to clear up at the special town meeting, because it would take, since it's a bylaw, a vote of the people. We went over this last night with planning board, and I actually called Michael, our town administrator, to get a deadline when he would need that for the warrant to be reviewed September 15th, second week in September, if you wanted to clear up a couple sodas.
Thank you.
The second is a rhetorical question. And I mentioned this once before. Would it be prudent before you issue a fine that it is reviewed by legal counsel before the actual fine, imposing of the fine is sent out?
Actually, Lenny, I had a conversation with Mike Mullin about this, and he said it's absolutely not necessary.
Okay, all right.
I checked.
Thank you.
I do agree that making sure that we have all of our ducks in a row is always a good thing, and...
That's how I feel. It's on the minister who authorizes the pay.
I think it's encouraging that Mike said that, that he felt that it wasn't necessary. I'm guessing that this probably, that, I'm guessing he may have done some investigation around it.
Yeah.
Which I'd, I'd be interested to pick his brain. So I'll make sure that I follow up with him after the meeting as well.
Yeah, and it may be because...
See if I can learn a little more to educate myself, my own edification.
Yeah, I think, and maybe also because we kept track. You know, it's like you invite someone and you tell someone over and over again you have to do something, and they don't do it. I mean, we have, under our bylaw, good enforcement authority, so... And to be frank, I'm not, I don't think the goal by the commission is to collect any money. It's literally just to get the wetland restored. You know what I mean? If, if Mike tells me I need to do it, I'll do it. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. You're from Hot Street. Okay, we just did the complaint. We just dealt with it. And a letter is, will be sent. Because of agriculture, there is a tricky, what can be, what can't be. And ours has always been, we've already gone through it once, that we, we like notification ahead of time from the person so that we can determine it so we don't get calls from everybody and have to make multiple visits. This, this happens every so often, and sometimes people are in their justification, and, and, and all of us get running, and, and it becomes a true job, a difficult job when that happens. And because of the agricultural connection, a letter's going to go out to, to request specific actions taken by the landowner. Now, if I'm not mistaken, you've got your certificate of compliance. You're all set with that? Okay, okay, oh, that's it right there?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay. Do you have any, do you, I mean, we kind of went by it, but I saw you come in, and I, and I think we owe you the, the courtesy to, to go back to it. Do you have any, any other questions?
I mean, what I was gonna say, previous, said what I thought you were gonna say, and it's the same excuse, it's agriculture. So no matter what I say or what I, you know, how I go about it, it's the same excuse with him. His, his way around everything is agricultural, you know? It, it just seems like the rules are different because of a couple of sheep that he has on his property, and it's agriculture. Rules for thee, not for me. I guess that's how I feel with that whole thing.
I, I, I see you...
And I feel, and I feel that if it was a, your average tax-paying Dayton resident, I don't feel that the same rules would apply. There would be different rules for them than there would be for a, a committee member, a board member. I, I just feel along the years, along the way, things have been done, things have been said, and the excuse is, oh, agriculture, oh, I, I can do it because I'm an agriculture. I got a farm, I got sheep, I got this. I just feel that, you know, it's...
You know, but this has been, this has, this land has been used in agriculture probably for 40 years or more.
And there's been illegal things done there?
It's, it's commercial. It's considered commercial, so...
I mean...
Because he makes over $5,000, or maybe it's 500 a year.
I mean, you know, he's, he's had greyhounds there that he raised. There's been...
I understand that, I get it, but...
You know, and, and, you know, I, I understand what you're saying. Believe me, there's no favoritism. We try to act accordingly. Okay, is, are, are we all set with everything? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.